All right, call the 387th meeting of the College Place Planning Commission to order. Yes. And... Let's do the roll call, please.
Ken Lauderbach?
Here.
Brian Rock?
Alan Davis?
Here.
Mindy Boyner?
Here.
Randall Brennus-Moore?
Here.
Scott Duncan?
Here.
Dan Olson?
Yep.
And we do not have anybody in the audience, so we will cruise through the public comment and move to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda, the approval of the agenda for today, and the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on November 20. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Moved by Commissioner Olson.
Second.
Sorry, Commissioner Duncan moved, and Commissioner Brennus seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? It passes 6-0. So on to the regular agenda. And beginning with Greg, the standard residential lot and setback schematic?
We have several things on the agenda tonight that are all housing-related, so it must be housing. Several of the items are some background information or some resource information that we'll be able to reference as we have some of the discussions about specific regulations. And so, if you don't mind, I thought I would just kind of work my way through each of the items and explain what it is, why you have it. You may have questions on some of the initial items, but what we're trying to get to is then the last couple items which are draft regulations. So, the first item is a schematic that you have that may look something like this. And it started as a relatively simple picture and kept adding to it. But the reason I wanted to have this as a resource is this is one of the products of the subdivision discussion that we had about a standard lot. And we're going to refer to this a couple of times later. But some of the aspects, you recall, we talked about when creating a new lot, that it would be 6,000 square feet or more. And there would be at least 60 feet of frontage. And so, the quick math, if you will, is if there's at least 60 feet of frontage, you would typically have a depth of 100 feet. 60 by 100 is the 6,000 square feet. So that would give you a sense of what a standard lot might look like. The green area, which is 60 feet by 20 feet, is the front yard setback. And we talked about that. And that may come into play when we finish the discussion about planter strips and the like. But 60 by 20 is the front setback, that's 1,200 square feet. The rear setback, which is also 20 feet, but would be 50 feet because we have some side setbacks, that is 1,000 feet. And then we would have typically on a lot, five feet of setback on both sides. So that's 400 feet by twice. The point is, if you take a standard lot and all the standard setbacks, you end up with 3,000 feet of setbacks, area where buildings cannot be. And you'd have 3,000 feet, the other half of the lot, where buildings could be located. So that's one of the consequences of the discussion that we previously had. One of the things that we also wanted to illustrate, and we'll talk more about tonight, is the notion of lot coverage. The amount of a lot that can have a building footprint on it. And for our discussions, we use building footprint. Sometimes in lot coverage or discussions like that, we're having discussions about impervious surfaces which could include driveways and sidewalks and things of that nature. But for our purposes, we're talking about building footprints. The code says, it's written now, that a single-family lot can have no more than 35% coverage by a building footprint. So the gray area... That gray area up there shows you what?
You want to point it down?
Oh, here we go.
No, I like to see him reach up there.
We've mounted it high so the little kids like him couldn't see it.
So there you go, that area right in there, if you take 35% of a 6,000 square foot lot, you get 2,100 square feet. So although there is 3,000 feet that you potentially can build in, you're only going to have a building footprint in 2,100 square feet. Now, it can be configured however you want. This just happens to show it all the way from five-foot setback to five-foot setback. It doesn't have to be configured that way. But that gives you a relative sense of what could happen.
So may I interrupt you with a question? Is that all right?
Yes, please.
So you talked about the impervious area distinction and how that square footage is measured for the developable property. Is that walls, or does eve overhang, roof overhang count in that? Or how are we measuring that?
We measure to calculable square footage. That's a word.
Yeah.
So walls or columns of support, like a front porch, things like that. Stairs wouldn't count into that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
So, excuse me, so a covered porch would be part of the?
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
But there's an exemption to that possibly if it's open on three sides?
Yeah, and that's going to be something we're going to talk about, yeah.
Okay.
So I just want to kind of set the framework for this. We're going to come back and use this several times. This area of...did I do that?
I don't know.
You did.
Okay, well, what I was trying to do was to say the net. So we, green, you can't build in, yellow, you can't build in, yellow, you can't build in, red, you can't build in, gray is what an example of the building footprint is. So in theory, the kind of the shades of blue and the white, that's your backyard in the standard kind of configuration. That's what you're likely to see in new subdivisions. Now, we're going to come back to this when we talk about accessory dwelling units. We're going to come back to this when we talk about some of the other forms of cottage or housing. But I want to have this as a reference. So there we go.
Can I speak to this?
Mm-hmm.
Some, well, John knows scenic view. Scenic view was platted 50, 120 for the lot sizes. In the process of developing that, they broke those up in different configurations. The lot that I lived on was 75 feet. Next door was 75 feet. Across the street, there were three lots that were 100 feet. So it can be broken up different ways. But if you have a developer that comes in and adheres to this specifically, you're going to see what I saw in California, subtract cookie cutter properties right down the line. The reason I got into the council is because a neighbor came in and bought the 100-foot lot, the two lots that were next to me, and was building a house. And his eve lines were extending beyond the five foot. So I came to council. And over the years, I got involved with council. But that's where it started. So you have 10 feet between houses, is what this is indicating. So you've got a house here, 10 feet, house here, 10 feet. And you just have a tract, you know. If a developer comes in and adheres to this without making any alterations, I fear for what we're going to have.
So, and so, one of the things as we go through all of these things is you always reserve the right to, after you have a new vantage point, if you want to, to go back and kind of reconsider and discuss something. In your discussions on subdivisions, I'm trying to remember where we came up. I think we said that 10% of the lots could vary by 10%. So you made some allowance for this. But it was a limited allowance. So, yes, one of the consequences is that there would be a degree of uniformity in subdivisions. Now, we're going to talk about some instances where you would not have some uniformity later in tonight's discussion. But that is one of the points. You could have lots that have more than 60 foot of frontage. So you could have some bigger ones. But, and you could have some larger lots. But you said the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. So what you would typically see is something like this.
And that, these are?
Minimums.
Minimums that we currently have that have been on the books since '84 when we first adopted our zoning code. So five-foot side yards are pretty universally standard across the United States. And you are allowed to have your eaves encroached into that to a certain degree. There are building codes because we don't want, obviously, a five-foot eve going to the property line because we'll have issues with fire jumping very easily and things of that.
The other issue I have is your front setback. You're taking up 11, minimum of 11 feet of that for sidewalk and priding strip if that's the way you go.
If we go that way, yeah, that's part of the discussion.
There's not a whole lot of front yard for you.
Right, possibly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, and we flagged that and said that was an item we wanted to have more discussion on. You said you wanted to get some public input on that. And the reason for this is now we can kind of see visibly what that policy discussion, what kind of impact it has. The next table. We'll refer to this frequently. Yes, that's the indimention one right there. Is something that you frequently see in codes. Sometimes it's in narrative form, but more and more, it's in a table. But it shows for each zoning district what the density is, what the minimal lot size is, minimal lot width, building height, lot coverage, setbacks. So all those things relate to density and dimensions for each of the zoning codes so somebody can go to one source and see what the requirements are. So this is just, is a tabular form that was reflected in this. So there should be some consistency there. As you can see, in the, coming across, you know, minimal lot size, 6,000 feet, the width of 60, maximum building height of 35 feet. We're going to be talking about that tonight. Lot coverage, 35%, we're going to be talking about that tonight. Front, side, and rear yard setbacks. When you get out of the single-family zone, you see less and less. You see it in the multifamily, but it's not uncommon as you scroll down, the downtown mixed-use, the commercial, the light industrial areas, you tend to have fewer requirements regarding things like lot sizes and front setbacks. You may see some different types of requirements in terms of screening, whether it might be landscaping or screening requirements if you have an industrial use near a residential area, for instance. So you'll see some different kinds of requirements. But most of these things kind of fall in the area of affecting the residential development. And that's what we're going to be talking about so much tonight. So that's another resource that we have. And let me, why don't we just go down and look at some of the footnotes here? Let's scroll down a bit because there's some things that we'll want to highlight. As is always the case, there's kind of, here's what we've said we want to accomplish. Now, putting it on paper becomes a challenge. And sometimes when you put it on paper, you say, wait a minute, maybe we need to reconsider that because it's just not coming out the way of thought. But a couple of things. We've said that when calculating minimum lot size, that critical areas and their buffers are not included in those calculations. So if you happen to have, say, a wetland on your lot or in the larger lot that is being subdivided, there are regulations that protect the wetland, establish buffers and things like that. But you don't get to include the wetland or a portion of the wetland in the buffer when you're calculating out the 6,000 square feet. So it has to be 6,000 usable feet in that sense. So you don't get to say, well, gee, I have a buffer that's going to be part of my 6,000 feet.
That was part of the problems with what we experienced in the Aiden Homes Development, right?
Yeah.
What is our critical area setback?
It varies based on the stream, but 35 feet is the smallest now.
35?
In Garrison Creek, it still remains 25 feet because it was all pre-platted prior to our new critical area limits.
And typically, critical areas you see put in it when you're creating new lots are put into a tract and are clearly distinguished from private property. Because if you don't, what can happen is, is over time, it can kind of lose its recognition that this is a critical area. And it just kind of, when I'm mowing my lawn, for instance, maybe I just mow a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more. And somewhere along the line, the line between where private property is suitable for development at an area that's supposed to be preserved and protected kind of gets lost. And so it makes it a lot easier, for instance, if it's in a tract. No, this is not private property and it's not suitable for development. So that's, there's some other reasons for doing that that are in the critical area regulations. There's another provision that's currently in the code that says that in the case of a duplex, that the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. Now, that is beneficial to duplexes because it would otherwise be 12,000 square feet. So part of the things that we discussed earlier as we go along, we're going to track or identify measures in the regulations that are contributing to a variety of housing types or affordability of housing, which is what the comp plan said we should be doing. And although this is a current requirement, it is an example of that because by making the lot size per duplexes less than just twice the single-family, that is a way of making that a more affordable housing option. So 7,500 square feet is a positive from a housing affordability standpoint. The regulations, this is also a current regulation, provides that in the case of duplexes, the lot coverage can go from 35% to 45%. So that also provides some flexibility. There is a provision that says when you have a corner lot, the side yard setback has to be 15 feet, not five feet. And the minimum lot width is 75 feet, not 60. That accounts for that additional 15 feet on the side, going back to our drawing in the yellow and green areas there. And that's to recognize that there are visibility issues around corners. Let's see, what was, no, 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 what's footnote number six refer to? Oh, there it is. Footnote number six has to do with the downtown mixed-use area. So when we get to that, there's no minimum lot size.
That refers to downtown mixed-use, general, commercial, light industrial, and university.
University and public use. So we'll get to that at a point in time. This is the area that we said that we wanted to, and there's a little comment box over there that you can't see. But what that says is, is that this is an area that is under review by the planning commission. And then you want to get, you ultimately want to have public comment on whether there should be a requirement for planter strips or not. One of the things that we had talked about was is that if there's going to be a planter strip, then perhaps that can reduce the, be the basis of reducing the front yard setback to 15 feet so the property owner isn't being penalized, or the developer isn't being penalized for having a planter strip. So we've just flagged that, and that's something that we'll continue to discuss. This item also about whether the reduction to 15 feet, if there's an open front porch, that's something that we'll continue to discuss. But as we've talked in previous meetings, the way it's written now, reductions in the front yard setback don't necessarily mean that garages can move closer to the front property line. And there is these other ones, I think I'm just going to hold because they relate to some of the specific things. The point is, is that as we proceed, we're going to be taking a step here and then things ripple throughout a number of documents. So we'll save all those because we're going to come to all of them. We should probably do number 12, thank you, Carol. Is that how, things like density, how do we make that calculation? And one of the things that we just make sure that we're really, really clear is that when doing the calculations, you can round off and potentially round up. But it has to be based on how we typically round in numbers. And so if it is 1.51, or a fracture that's greater than that, that can round up to two. But if it is 1.50 or 1.49, that doesn't round up to two. So we want just to be real clear because sometimes we get into discussions and some people have different ways of doing math. And, well, it's a part of a lot, so it's got to be a lot. And this would provide us with some guidance and direction there in terms of how it will be done. Accessory buildings, we're going to talk about in a minute. So there's another resource that we have to work with. And ultimately, whatever we decide will be reflected in this table. The next table, permitted uses. This is something that we're going to refer to on numerous occasions. And in fact, at perhaps our next meeting, we may spend a lot of time on this. But I wanted to provide it to you, to show you, because it is, I believe, a bit of a departure from how the code has been organized in the past. Kind of the, historically, zoning codes were written and you would go to a chapter like commercial or residential, and there would be a list of all the permitted uses. And then you would go and say, well, then maybe what about the industrial zone? Is it permitted there? And you'd read down the list. And one of the things, and maybe it's just because we're processing, it's gotten easier, whatever, but cities have done, is instead of having all those lists and lists and lists, they have a table of permitted uses. Where you have all the permitted uses, you have all the zones. And at one glance, you can see either what are the uses that is permitted in that zone by just looking down the column? What's permitted in a single-family residential zone? You just look down the column. If you want to see where a particular use is permitted, you just look across the row and you can see. So it makes it easier for all of us to figure out where something is permitted or not. And the terminology, just to explain, is a P means that something is permitted in that zone. There's still requirements that need to be met, permits still need to be issued, but it is a use that is permitted in that zone. And A means that it can be permitted as an accessory use in that zone. So it has, there has to be a primary use, but it's something that also can occur there. So in a little bit, when we talk about accessory dwelling units, an accessory dwelling unit is a dwelling unit that is accessory to a primary unit use. And so there are some things in here that are identified as permitted as accessory uses, which means secondary to the primary use. There are a few things in there that have a C that say may be permitted through the issuance of a conditional use permit, which means that that use is such that in some situations, it can be permitted and in some situations, it should not be permitted. It depends on the facts on the ground, how the project is designed, and whether there are mitigating measures that can be adopted or conditions of approval imposed that would move it from being undesirable and not compatible to desirable and compatible. Conditional uses, some tables, you see everything as a conditional use. More likely, you'll see that very few are conditional uses. And that's kind of a good goal to have. If you have good standards, you shouldn't have to have too many things that you're making on a case, you know, kind of making up the standards in each individual case. It should be pretty clear. We're going to talk about that a lot more in an upcoming meeting. But the reason I wanted to show you this is we're going to be talking about some housing uses tonight. And there's a good example, stop right there. We're going to be talking in a little bit about townhouses and zero-lot-line housing. We're going to be talking about tiny houses. And in both of those instances, it says P, that they're permitted under this table. They would be permitted in a multifamily zone. One of the things we're going to talk about tonight is, after we talk about what a townhouse or zero-lot-line development is and what the standards are, is should it be permitted in more zones than just the multifamily zone or not? Or should it be permitted at all? So I wanted to provide you with this table so you could get a sense of, once again, how all these pieces kind of come together. So on this table, we'll discuss in a minute, you'll see there's townhouses, zero-lot-line development, there's tiny homes, up the page, there's accessory dwelling units. You'll see one for cottage housing, cohousing, any type of housing we think about, what we want to discuss, ultimately, will get expressed on this table. And we'll say, here's where it's permitted and here's where it's not. And if there are special standards that govern that, they'll be expressed over here. But we'll say, go see this chapter, because that's where the special standards are. So that's the third building block that we're going to use tonight. And I'm going to stop there for a minute because the next, that all is a way to be able to, lead us to be able to talk about some of the regulations.
Article in the paper tonight talked about the idea of different centuries and how development and zoning developed. And older is more like old green quality, you have mixed kind of things together. And then in the newer century, 20th century, everything was separated out by zones. And the appeal was that we need to intermix more. But I remember in my childhood, both in California and Montana where I lived, there was a neighborhood store, you know, you could walk down and buy things. You didn't have to drive, you know, to some mall or somewhere. By separating, you provided traffic to and from rather than keeping it close in.
Yeah. We saw some examples of that when we were on our tour, when we got to some of the older parts of Wall to Wall, we saw some examples of that. And a few years ago, that was one of the kind of the hot trends in planning was the notion of new urbanism, where planners had discovered planning from 100 years ago and they said, we need to go back to the way it was and we should be encouraging things like houses with front porches on them, with the garages on the back off of alleys so that people can sit on their front porch and chat with their neighbors when they walk by. And things like that. And then we should make subdivisions with sidewalks and paths to make them more walkable and to do a number of those things. Or to have a mixture of uses where mixed use wasn't a term that applied so much to a building as it was to an area where you could have a number of different types of uses and activities within an area. So that's, yeah. What paper was that in?
UB.
Okay.
It was a, I don't remember the name.
Letter to the editor.
Letter to the editor. I don't remember the name, but.
Yeah. Just in Spokane last week, there was a guest editorial in the Spokane neighborhood. Just in Spokane last week, there was a guest editorial in the Spokane neighborhood about tiny houses that we're going to talk about. And it was an article about tiny houses is, is something that cities should consider as a way to address either housing affordability or to help address the homeless situation in communities. And so that's one that's also, we're seeing a lot of discussion of right now. So those are some of the resources, kind of visually to be able to see the product of the discussion on subdivisions, but it ultimately gets expressed in a table of densities and dimensions. And then we have a table of permitted uses that shows what uses are permitted in what zones. And then that leads us now to a series of items we want to discuss about housing specifically, starting with accessory dwelling units. So let's start there with the... So visually on the table where it says we're permitted or not permitted, and over on the right, it said, see chapter so and so, this is a draft of one of those chapters where there are some specific regulations that would apply to, in this case, accessory buildings and structures and dwelling units. And so it applies to a number of things, but in that category falls accessory dwelling units, which is what we're going to primarily talk about. But you could, in theory, have an accessory building or structure and it's not an accessory dwelling unit. It could be a detached garage, for instance. It could be a shop. It could be a storage shed. Some people have a home business and they have it in a separate building. It might be an art studio or woodworking area. We have at our house, at home, kind of a greenhouse or potting room that's an accessory area. And sometimes you see maybe a fancy children's playroom or playhouse or something. So you can have accessory buildings can be a lot of different things, not just limited to accessory dwelling units. You also can get into some situations. So we're going to start with the general requirements and then work our way to accessory dwelling units. So if you scroll down just a little bit, there's the examples of what an accessory building is, stop right there. Some of the things that an accessory building is not, parking a bus in your backyard, or a tent, or an RV, or a camper, or a mobile home, things of those nature, a shipping container, or a railroad car, those are not accessory buildings. Now, if you want to, we can change that and say that they are, but.
Yeah. One of those things we need to talk about is the tiny house.
Yes, and we will talk about that.
So that's, it's highlighted, or at least on the one I printed off, it's highlighted.
Yeah. So we're going to specifically talk about whether a tiny house, especially if it's put on a foundation, we need to talk about what is a tiny house, but especially if it's on a foundation, is that an accessory building? Is that okay? Now, it gets a little bit gray area, and the reason we use the term buildings and structures is because not all buildings, yeah, not all buildings are a structure. But, and some things are not a building or a structure. If you go to Costco and you buy a metal kind of a thing that can go and function as a carport or a cover for your car, is that a building or a structure? Or is that just a temporary cover? And that becomes important then because buildings have setbacks. And so some of these things, you know, could that be built right up to the property line, for instance? If you had a house, could you have, right at the property line, one of those kind of metal covers for a neighbor's vehicle? Maybe yes, maybe no. Or maybe it's harder to answer if it's yours. What about me? Can I have a cover on mine? And then it gets a little bit more complicated because you get some things like, are they designed to handle snow loads and things like that? And then what happened? Where does the snow go? And so all of these have some complications, but we're going to talk about what is and what isn't an accessory building. Also, we want to distinguish if you are renting a building or a room for 30 days or less, that's not an accessory dwelling unit, but that is something that is subject to regulations and we'll have a discussion about vacation rentals. And so what this says is, is that if you're talking about renting a building or room for 30 days or less, you do have to get a special use permit or other permits from the city and you have to meet the requirements, but those are different set of requirements.
In regard to that, particularly in this town, if you have a room or another building that you're renting to, in this case, college students or other people that are there on a fairly permanent basis, is that considered an accessory dwelling unit or is that?
In this case, the distinguishing feature is, is how long is the rental? If it is being rented for up to 30 days or less, then it's a vacation rental, there are some tax implications for that and some business license implications for that. If it is for more than 30 days and it's an accessory dwelling unit and it's going to be subject to the requirements that we're going to be talking about in a minute.
Yeah. And another distinction would be, is there an internal separation in the unit? So if there's a doorway that allows you to, and they're utilizing the cooking facilities, there are a number of things that factor into whether or not you have a dwelling unit. So do you have cooking and a way to, you know, bathe yourself in restrooms? And, and is it self, you know, is it its own unit? If it's got a staircase connecting the basement to the top and they're not locked and open, then it's, would be one unit, not a, not an accessory unit.
Which may have started out as a mother-in-law, but turned into.
Yeah.
Now, item number four becomes important. Accessory buildings and structures shall comply with all applicable provisions of the time, including setback, lot coverage, building height, as well as the provisions of the international building codes adopted by the city. So that's why this definition of what is and what isn't, because the ones that are have those requirements that they're going to have to meet. Now, one exception is that accessory structures or buildings with a footprint of 100 square feet or less are not considered buildings within the building code, and therefore you don't need a building permit and can be located in the rear yard setback up to five feet from the rear or side property line. So if you go back to that picture, there was a little blue area that was in the setback. That would be an example of how you could have 100 square foot accessory building that in the, in the rear yard setback. If it's more than 100 feet, you can't. But if it's 100 feet or less, you can under this. And so there's that provision right there.
So clarification, shouldn't there be no less than five feet, not up to five feet?
No less than, yes, I probably, yes, to make it clear. Yes, thank you.
And I, it's actually, the building code keeps going back between 120 square feet. I was wrong. It's not 100, so we'll make that. The building code, every, every cycle, it's been bouncing back from 120 square feet, where there's an exemption, to right now, it's 200 square feet. Our building department and staff prefer the 120 exemption level because you start getting to that 200, you're starting to talk about a pretty significant structure that you should have to get a permit for. So we want to codify our code that will say, you need a permit if you're anything larger than 120 square feet. So that may screw with your math.
Yes.
Tiny a little bit, but not much.
So is there a provision, I haven't seen it, but if somebody builds the 100 shed on this side of the yard, can they put another one on the other side of the yard? Great question. Let's scroll ahead. It's just about a couple more down, right there. No accessory building or structure shall have a footprint greater than 600 square feet. And the total footprint of all accessory buildings and structures shall not exceed 700 feet, which now should say 720.
Yeah.
You can build six of them.
And except, that that's why there's the next one that says that you only get one of those. And we'll change that to 122.
We do have people that have a ton of sheds that don't require permits in their backyards and they're just packed together and it's, it's a fire hazard and an eyesore and.
So you get 720 feet total. No more than 600 feet in the biggest one, and you only get one of those freebies. Now, that becomes important when you go back to that lot, because we're talking about lot coverage. So if you have 720 feet of accessory buildings, that means that the house size.
Shrinks.
Shrinks.
So is it, is this for pre-existing or is this for everything? Because I live on a piece of property where the garage is 1500 square feet. So it's already over what you're talking about.
There's a provision that's coming up that says, was that, that if you already have one that is non-conforming, you could convert it to an accessory dwelling unit, as long as you don't make it bigger. But if you've got it, you can convert it.
And so this, this 1500 square foot garage, does it, is it in the rear yard setbacks right now? Because if it is, it's already, under our current code, it's illegal, non-conforming or maybe illegal entirely.
It probably is, but I would have to.
So if it's that big, it might, might have a setback. You know, it should under our current.
The property was originally two separate lots, so they put the garage in one lot and the house on the other lot was the whole idea.
Oh, yeah.
And it still could be two lots under a lot, but I think it might be real close to that.
There's always going to be an odd thing like that.
Well, aren't they grandfathered in?
Right. So you call them illegal, non-conforming, they're allowed to remain. If they were destroyed, then you do some adjustments.
Yeah. And I'll show you when we get to the language, is what it says is, is that you can convert it to an accessory dwelling unit, as long as you do not increase the degree of non-conforming. So if it's non-conforming because it's too close to the property line, you could potentially expand it, you just can't go closer to the property line. Or if it's non-conforming because it's too large, you can convert it, but you can't make it larger. If it's non-conforming because it's higher, you can convert it, but you can't make it higher. So whatever is non-conforming, you can't make the degree of non-conformity worse. So we've got then that, let's just go back up to where we were, just a couple lines. Yep. So we've said then that, and this applies to all accessory buildings. None, no one accessory building, new one, shall have a footprint greater than 600 square feet. The total of all will not exceed 720. And, and if you have one of the real small ones, it's can exceed, you can only have one and you've got the 120 feet. And you've got to keep at least 10 feet of separation from buildings. Now we get into accessory dwelling units specifically, starting with one accessory dwelling unit per lot. John had raised a question, and that's still a question, of do you want to allow more than one? This is written as one. It can be detached, you know, a separate building. It can be attached to the house, or it can be a mother-in-law apartment in the house, but you get one. And whatever one you want, but the way it's written is you get one.
The only other community that I'm aware of in Washington that's doing three is Seattle, so that you can have one in the main building and one detached, or I, I don't think you can have two detached. I think they, it's one or the other or both, and then the primary residence.
Above the garage and then one in the backyard type of an idea.
One in the primary residence in the main structure or attached to it somewhere, or one detached, which could be above a garage or it may be on the main floor, not associated with the garage, but yeah.
So we said, the kind of similar to some of the old big homes that they convert into different apartments kind of thing? Or is it actually building a new one with that plan in mind and they just?
I think what, you'll see a lot of conversion over in the Seattle area. And we see, you know, I think over time, we've seen conversion unbeknownst to the city and college place. There are some that have, that are in a single-family zone, that have a unit, their primary residence is on the main floor and then the basement's been converted, and then they also have one in the backyard. There's, they're just, there are.
Yeah. And that's something you, we can discuss, you could potentially allow, but the way it's written is one. And it does say, oh, go ahead.
Let's just go back to the 1500 square foot building of my property. The building is actually tall enough, almost tall enough, to cut it in half and put blocks above each other. So you're saying that you couldn't cut that out and make two extra dwellings, is what you're saying?
The way it's proposed now, we're just talking about one accessory dwelling unit, one ADU.
And if it's within the building, or if it's attached to the building, it has to have a separate entrance. Because we're not talking about renting a room out, we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit, and it has to be self-contained. So it has to have a kitchen and its own bathroom, all those things. It has to meet the, the building code as an accessory dwelling unit. You get into diff, you know, we're not talking about boarding rooms or boarding houses or something like that. We're talking about, this is a licensed approved accessory dwelling unit. And so it might be the kind of thing where it has an entrance on the side or an entrance on the back or whatever, it goes down into the basement and it's a separate dwelling The accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 600 square feet, just repeating it. You have to meet the building code. This is a provision arguably that would make it easier to have an accessory dwelling unit, because we're going back to that visual picture. If, if the lot coverage requirement stays the same, in order to have an accessory dwelling unit, then your house would have to get smaller, unless it was an existing situation, then that's a different matter. But otherwise, if you were going about intentionally to do this, it means that your house would get smaller. This gives you a little bit of a break, enables you to almost, not quite, but almost be held harmless from that. I mean, still end up with about the same size house, whether you did or didn't have the accessory dwelling unit by increasing that 10%. It's a pretty darn close. Another provision, subject to review and discussion, is, has to do with parking requirements. And if a single-family residence has a requirement for two parking places and an accessory dwelling unit, you're adding a dwelling unit. Many communities require that you add a parking space. So you have to be able to show where the third car can park. Some communities, in an effort to encourage accessory dwelling units, have removed that requirement or have made exceptions in the case of if you are. requirement, or have made exceptions in the case of if you are close to a bus route. Or you could say perhaps, close to the university. But if you're close to the university, you're going to be close to a bus route. So what this says is, if you're within a quarter of a mile of a bus route, that one additional parking requirement could be raved. That's something that you may want to discuss. More generous, or less generous? Item number seven is one that conveys a sense or an intent. As written, it will be somewhat difficult to enforce. Some communities have gone to great lengths to establish design standards for accessory dwelling units, so it can be more enforceable. Portland, for instance, has some language like this, but then they have a whole design manual about what they mean, what does that mean? So that if your building looks like this, then this is what your accessory dwelling has to, has to look like. And if it's like this, and it's like this, if you go walk around the neighborhoods in Portland, and you see some really, really cool-looking accessory dwelling units, it's just at a whole nother level of enforcement and regulations and magnitude. This is a statement of intent. If somebody really wanted to push it, it will be difficult, because the courts have said, and one can argue that what I'm about to say is a contradiction in terms, but the courts have said, is this something that a reasonable man, that's where you could argue there may be a contradiction in terms, how can you have a reasonable man, like a Jumbo shrimp, or something? No. But can a reasonable man read that and understand what you can and can't do? So can, is that, if we say similar in appearance, and constructed with similar materials, does that convey to somebody a clear sense of what they can and can't do? Well, my house is made out of wood, this is made out of wood, that's similar materials.
Yeah, but if one of them is sided, or the other one's got sheet metal on the side, that's a huge disparity.
Yes.
So, you know, that's a reasonable, other than that, yeah, you could have, you could really say a lot. There's a lot of variances.
So does it beg, according to, I guess, the court, that then you would have to have something like Portland has?
If you really wanted to be aggressive on this, then we would have to have a lot more. This is going to give you, you know, something to work with, but there'll be still limits to it.
If you're going to have a standard like this, then you should be specific about what you want. So maybe the pitch of the roof needs to be the same as the primary residence. So you can say, oh, this is a 612 roof on this house, you have to put a 612 on the garage. But, you know, design standards that are not specific will fail if challenged. You have to tell them exactly what you are expecting to have on the house, otherwise...
You could just say, cannot use a steel building with a stick-built house, you know. It might be easier just to limit it than trying to set up a 20-page standard guide.
Yeah.
That doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Just go in and say, you know, your siding, your roofline, and your siding, you know, your siding can't be steel on one side and regular on the other. That's, I mean, that's real simple.
But that's why also, going back up on the top, where we said things like, you can't use a, an old railroad car, and you can't use an RV, and some things like that, because that helps them knock some of the things out.
Well, you could specify same type of roofing, same pitch, same siding. If you don't specify something, you're going to end up with junky-looking buildings that somebody is renting.
But remember, remember though, we don't have design standards for single-family homes, so if you, can't have both. I would think that if you're going to have design standards, you're going to have design standards for both.
Doesn't, don't they have to draw their plans, and their, what they're doing with the homes, and they have to get permits?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't that take care of it?
Yeah, well, it'll have to meet the building code, and there's some other, a couple of things we're, you're going to see in a minute, that's also going to have an impact on this. But if we, if this is an important issue, then we need to put some more meat on those bones, I think is what we're saying. And it could be things like, you know, it has to have the same siding material, same roof pitch. There may be some things that we can say that will help put some meat on without getting carried away like Portland is.
Well, even over at Tuscanyville, when we put in a little garden shop, we had to have the same paint, same style. I mean, that made common sense to me.
Well, those are set up in HOA information on too, so, you know, everything's off, everything, you know, means nothing when it comes to HOAs, because HOAs can really, really stick to the line, as long as the basics fall into the ground. So an HOA can force you to make your house look, your garage look exactly like your house. I mean, you know, matter of fact, I've even heard of HOAs, and I think it's over in Red Hawk, that you can't even put a playhouse in the backyard unless it looks just like your house. You know, it has to have the exact same building features, and designs, and everything, regardless of what you build. You know, so HOAs can do that, the city doesn't, you know. Like you said, the last thing we need to do is get into something where we're limiting people so dramatically, they just don't want to come here and build a house. You know, and honestly, we gotta remember that. You know, everything that we do, we're going to try to bring people to town, not scare them away, because we're so overburdened some of the regulations that nobody wants to deal with.
I'm reminded, just seeing your foot, a couple blocks from our house in Spokane, there's an old neighborhood with beautiful old houses, big houses, and well landscaped, and Olmsted-designed parks, and these, it's just absolutely gorgeous. And there's this white house that's on a, kind of a visually very prominent position, it's got white pillars, and it just absolutely is gorgeous. And the new owners have just painted it, actually, they started painting it and stopped, and they finished it with the color of Ken's cast. And maybe bright lime green is historically accurate, it's just hard to imagine. And it was such a gorgeous house, and now there's this kind of partially painted fluorescent green house, and I keep saying, well, maybe that's just the primer or something, but...
That should be against the law.
But, to each his own. To each his own.
You know, that's a good point, Greg, because there's, there's a whole spectrum of, in the design world, I mean, you can pick up design catalogs, architectural catalogs, and they're doing all sorts of crazy things with materials, like corrugated materials, that a lot of people consider to be like an industrial type of material, but you mix it with wood, and concrete, and stucco, and to a lot of people, that's, it becomes beautiful.
It's art.
Art.
Go online and look at container homes.
Container homes. I would question whether or not that should be in the list. I, I think somebody could, I mean, through engineering, could convert one of those, and I've seen them, you know, in magazines. They're, they can be a suitable and very attractive structure. It may not be your preferred style of architecture, but people are doing it. And to get into the realm of regulating design in the residential neighborhoods, I, I just would be reluctant to go down that road, and I would advise that council probably would not be supportive of that level of detail. I mean, we were lucky to get design standards for College Avenue, where that's more of a, you know, applying a higher level of standard to commercial development. But even that, those design standards still allow for the individual to have some flexibility, and you still could end up with a modern structure that has those required, you know, meets the architectural requirements in there.
Let's talk about a couple more things, and I want to go through all of them before we have a discussion, because they kind of have a back and forth. So a couple more things. Here's the lower back provision, existing non-conforming accessory buildings may be, can be converted, providing that the degree of non-conformity is not increased. So let's go some more. Okay, a restrictive covenant would be recorded, so that you can't kind of use the accessory dwelling unit process to kind of work your way around some regulations. And this last one is one that is based on a requirement in Portland, and John and I talked about it, which says that before a property owner goes down the path of starting to design the accessory dwelling unit, or figuring out how they're going to convert the shop, or whatever, that they have to set up an appointment with the staff, and out on the site, and go through all the regulations, and to be able to see the situation, so that any kind of issues or things that they need to be aware of, they can be thinking about from the very beginning, as opposed to having somebody spend a whole bunch of time and energy, say, well, no one ever told me that, or I didn't know that that's what it meant. So this is intended to, to help people get off on the right foot. And we, you know, we could, whether you should apply to all accessory dwelling units, or just certain ones, or whatever, that's something, but, but those are all the ones I think we missed as we went through, because there's a couple of provisions in here.
We have two numbers.
On providers, what's that?
We have two number fours. We missed the second number four, the maximum height.
Yeah, there's building height we missed, and we missed the privacy provision. Is that up on the, up above?
Yeah.
Keep going up.
I'll go to page one.
There it is, there it is, right there. Maximum height, and this is so, accessory buildings, this is all accessory buildings, not just buildings. And this is 14 feet at the eve line. So you wouldn't get on an accessory building two complete floors.
So I talked to our building department about this, and basically what you can get in, with a 14-foot eve height, is you can get basically a story and a half. But the, the minimum code requirements, and accounting for, you know, a floor joists and stuff, you can get the minimum ceiling height at the eve, so that all of that, let's say 600 square foot footprint would count into the footprint of the accessory dwelling unit, say if it was above a garage. And one of the reasons why we want to have, or are proposing, and most codes for accessory dwelling units do have these eve heights or height restrictions, is to make sure that we don't end up with these towering structures over, let's say, a ranch, or, or, you know, other, other type of architect, the primary residence that might be smaller. We don't want bigger towering structures in the backyards. And the second, well, the second provision is the windows.
Yeah. And so going with that, then, is the question of, well, can an accessory dwelling unit be designed so that you end up with somebody looking into your house? And there's several communities have attempted to deal with this, some have pages and pages of regulations. This is a provision from Sandpoint, Idaho, and it's based on a model ordinance that the state of, the state of Idaho provided to all cities. And then Sandpoint picked it up. But it's kind of interesting that in the state that doesn't require building permits, they were providing language to cities on terms of how buildings would be designed to try to minimize the visual intrusion. So we brought that language in as maybe a simple way of trying to get windows either oriented away, or by using things like obscure glass, if it's a bathroom or something like that, so that you're not looking directly in. So that was one that we missed as we scrolled through. So those, there's an example, then, of how a simple line in the code says, yes, you can have accessory buildings, and yes, you can have an accessory dwelling unit to a primary residence. But here are all the regulations that apply. And so what we wanted to do was for you to see that, see if you had questions, or if you have reactions to some of the provisions. We are, and if we want to, in a moment, when we talk about tiny houses, talk specifically about whether a tiny house can be used as an accessory dwelling unit. But any or all of the things we said, I think are open, because these are all regulations to implement accessory dwellings.
Doesn't your 14-foot eve line negate the ability to put an ADU above a garage?
No, what it would allow you to have is, say, an eight-foot ceiling, and let's just say, a 12-foot floor joists, or whatever, and then...
Twelve-inch?
A 12-inch, sorry, 12-foot, floor joists. And then the wall would be, what's the math there? We're left with...
Five feet.
Five feet. And in the building code, and then you would, you would have a, you would have a vaulted ceiling, up to a certain point, and you could flatten it out, or do whatever. But in the building code, the minimum ceiling height measured at like, for a vaulted space is five feet. And then, you know, that gets greater as you get further out into the room.
Just remember, that's going to cause you issues if you're then going to say you have to have the same roof pitch as your primary house.
Well, I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing that we have those, but yeah.
You're just saying it would not work with a 400-foot pitch.
Yeah. Well, or you may not have, you may not be able to build a garage, a unit above a garage. If you, if you had a requirement for, say, the house had a, you know, one, basically a flat roof, then, yeah, it would be difficult to do that with a, above a garage.
Now, we have seen codes where they have said 20 feet, 25 feet, or they haven't used the eve line, they've just said, height of the accessory dwelling unit shall be this, or in some cases, they've just said the accessory dwelling unit can be no taller than the primary unit. And primary unit, going back to the table, in single-family residential zone, the table says that the overall building height, if I can find it, is 35 feet.
Okay, 35.
So there's a lot of different ways of measuring this.
So we, there's kind of two things, and I'm getting a little confused here, but so we have accessory structures, and we have regulations on that, and then we have accessory dwelling units.
Which is a subset of accessory structures.
So an accessory structure, or was it just the one that was 100 by 100, that can only, that could be in the backyard setting? Just 100 by 100? So if it's bigger than that...
By square feet.
Then it has to meet the other housing setbacks.
Can we go to that, that picture?
If it's, so right now, and we're not proposing to change this, an accessory structure, as long as it doesn't exceed 600 square feet, can have that reduced five-foot side and rear setback.
Here's, here's a 600-foot structure right there, but it would have to be, would have to meet the rear and side yard setback.
Okay.
Here's one that's 100 feet, it would have to actually be two dots more, two squares more, it'd be 120, but it could be then back in the rear yard setback.
And based on the regulations, we've increased the lot coverage to 45%. So it would allow, so in this picture, if the house is the gray, does it allow the blue accessory? Is that, would that fit in the coverage, or not?
Yeah, I should be clear, if, in this picture right here, that if you did not have an accessory dwelling unit, your house would be the gray and the light blue area. If you had an accessory dwelling unit that was detached, your house would have to shrink under the 35%. If it was increased to 45%, you could, you could have, you know, you'd end up with a very, very small backyard.
Okay. So, all right, so in that scenario, the accessory structure still has to meet side yard and backyard setbacks?
Yes.
Okay. So, so how I see it, and they still need to meet overall lot coverage. So I guess one of the issues I'm having a problem with is, then what's the big deal about limiting to the 14 feet? Because you could build... Because you could build, in addition to the house, the primary house, and if it was a single story, you can build a second story.
I think there's some confusion here.
Okay, okay, you missed a something?
Well, I don't believe that, I think the diagram's wrong. So under our current code, you can build an accessory garage up to 600 square feet and have a five-foot side and a five-foot rear.
Under your current?
Under our current code.
Okay, then I'm mistaken.
So that needs to be moved down into that red area, and I'm sorry I didn't catch this when we were on the phone, but, and so that's where the, allowing that 120 square foot in the rear yard with your 600 square foot would be permissible. So you get one extra non-permitted, doesn't need to have a permit, in that area, in that rear setback or in outside, in the rear setback. So...
So the rear setback is five foot?
Yeah, so this...
So that, yeah, so it is...
This blue should be moved down into this right here, this category right here.
It may be moved.
But you're saying the proposed is to have a 20-foot setback, don't you say?
What?
You're proposing then, we then, we now change that to a 20-foot, 20-foot setback on the back. No?
No, that was a misstatement of my understanding of what the code was.
So I guess part of my...
Can I clarify one additional thing? It's total square footage right now under current code. You can only have 600 square feet. So if you want to have a two-story, then you, you're limited to a 300 square foot footprint, and then you can do a 300-foot second story. It's total square footage. Under the new code, we're saying you can, you can still have the 600-foot square footprint, and you can have another 600 square feet above that for your accessory dwelling unit, but we're going to cap the height of the walls at it so we don't end up, and there's some examples in town that I can point out to you guys where we have, there was a misinterpretation, and I think I've told you about this, when I first started here, somebody applied for a detached accessory structure, the 600 square foot footprint, and I misinterpreted the code to, to allow, I allowed them to build a 1,200 square foot structure. They had an office above a garage. And it's eight-foot tall walls and then a 612 or something like that pitch, and they had windows, and this is where the window idea came, came to me from hearing from complaints from the neighbors. They had windows on this five-foot side yard, looked into the backyard, and, and then the office, the guy had kitchen, a kitchen cabinetry business, so he had a little model kitchen set up there, and he had a bathroom, which was permitted, you could have a bathroom in there. Well, that, the business went away over time and he started renting it out, and that's when we started getting complaints from the neighbors. So they complained about the height of it and the fact that the living space looked right into the backyard, and so, I mean, you, yeah, anyway. Does that clarify? I kind of rambled and got off track.
No, but thank you for clarifying that, about that. So we're saying, then restated, we're saying that the primary structure can, there's a 20-foot setback in the rear, but except all accessory structures, it's only five.
As long as they don't exceed 600 square feet on the footprint.
Well, and what we're saying is you can't exceed 600 square feet under any certain standards.
Right, well, under our current code, but, and, but under your proposal, we would allow the additional 120 square foot non-permitted structure that doesn't require a permit to, a shed or something like that.
So I guess under, under that explanation, in my own mind, I think that, okay, accessory structures that are for something other than living, a garage, a shop, storage, I can see that they could go back there and, you know, like you explained, but I would almost make a clarification, or I would think that then those structures that they were in there would not be allowed to be converted to a dwelling or accessory dwelling unit. That in order for you to have an accessory dwelling unit, you need to meet the setbacks of the dwelling. So that you would have to have that 20-foot backyard, but then with that scenario, in my mind, it's like, I don't care about the height because it could already be the house there that has a two-story.
Yeah, so, and, and all of the codes that I have read allow this reduced setback for these, a set, remember, there, the point is, is, one of the reasons why these, this is such a movement for this is the affordability issue, and we're, we're not any different than anybody else in the state of Washington. In fact, we're one of the worst in terms of having affordable housing across the board. So the point is, is to have an accessory structure, not a, not a second home, not a three-bedroom, two-bath house in your backyard, but an accessory. So a small unit, one bedroom maybe, maybe not even a one-bedroom, maybe it's just a studio. And, and to keep them small, and because they're accessory, we allow them to utilize the same utility connections so that you're not, you're not paying for the capital facility charge, those sort of things. It's just, it's not supposed to be a, another, you know, family dwelling in your backyard. So that's why, you know, you give some flexibility and you keep it small.
But isn't that what we need, is family housing?
Actually, what we're hearing at the community council workshop is that we have a lack of one-bedroom apartments in the, in the valley, we have a lack of studio apartments. Yes, there are, there are, there are families that need homes as well, but that's not the point of this code. We don't want family units in backyards. We want to provide flexibility for the college student, for the widow, that, you know, now she's going to rent out her house to that family and she's going to live above her garage, those sort of scenarios. Not, not the, we don't want another home in the backyard, another SFR.
So I guess that's sort of where I'm going with my argument, is if accessory dwelling units are meant to be an accessory unit, a smaller one-bedroom apartment or something, then by allowing it and having regulations, it's like, okay, convert your basement, convert your upstairs, or even build maybe on your own building above the garage, a second story or something. Why do we need to go and allow somebody to build an accessory building in the back that's like detached with now no, you know, just five-foot rear yard in order to create an accessory dwelling unit? I would say that there's no need for that, that that's probably, you know, not something that, that promotes the livability. I mean, I can see then, you know, all these issues about, okay, now we need to limit the height and we need to do this or the other thing. Well, we already have regulations and setbacks and rear yard setbacks that deal with all of that for a reason. And so that's why I would say, okay, if, if you, if you want to build a special or add to your house to provide for an accessory dwelling unit, then it needs to meet the setbacks. It needs to be maybe even attached to the house or somehow, depending on your situation, but it shouldn't be that you then go build in the backyard in a center and, you know, five-foot off of your fence.
Let me throw a scenario out to, that's kind of contrary to what you said.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, that's different ideas.
I recently have had a client, if they and I tried to find them a thousand square foot all of us, who, who remains, they didn't, they couldn't find one that they liked good enough. There's just not even really nice thousand square foot houses in this town anymore. So their daughter has five acres just on the edge of town, and they, so they decided to build an ADU on daughter property. Now granted, five acres is big, but still, a half acre is a pretty good size for a property. They would, you would never have done it if their regulation was 600 square feet. It just so happens the county, I think, is 1,000 or 50 or 1,000 or somewhere around there. And for two, a couple, a retired couple of the property owners, so they are currently building their ADU on their daughter's property.
We could, that was just a number we picked. You could increase it to 800 square feet, and we've seen a range of them, from six to eight to 1,200 square feet or 1,000. But you've got to limit the footprints of them at some point.
Yeah, but I would suggest that it bases on the property. Obviously, on a 60, on an R60, you're not going to get a thousand square foot ADU and stick within your 45%. It's just my way of thinking about it.
That's not true. I could put, I could put a thousand square foot on the back of my house and wall, easily.
Well, and stay within 45% of the property.
Yeah, because my, my existing home is 800 square feet. So it's possible all over this valley.
So I guess Ken's point is, is that we could just use lot coverage as a way of regulating it as opposed to having a...
Set square footage.
A set square footage. So if you did have a larger lot, you could have a, a larger accessory dwelling. You still might want to have a maximum so that, because otherwise you could end up a situation where you've kind of circumvented the notion of one single-family residence per house.
Then you're having two houses on one lot. I, I get that. But then my thing back to that is, you know, I understand that maybe what you're, what you're kind of seeing is that they're missing one in house, but man, it seems to me that your typical, because I grew up this way, your typical person who's really needing that kind of help is a single mother with kids or a single father with kids. And I'm sorry, a one-bedroom list is cut, but a two-bedroom does. I have three older sisters and a mom.
And I'm, I don't, I'm not arguing that, but you, I don't think you want a two or three-bedroom in backyards because that's not accessory, that's a, that's a home.
Primary.
That's a primary, that's what the front is supposed to be. So the point of this is to have accessory dwelling units. And if you, if you Google it, I mean, you'll, you'll find code after code after code, they're small units, and they're in backyards, it's an affordability issue, and I'm passionate about it. I, I mean, I think that they can be added on to homes as well. There's one in your neighborhood, Scott, that, I mean, they're, they, it's not an accessory essentially because they, they can do it under the codes, there's an internal connection, but I...
It's kind of called a mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law, that's what, that's, that's one term that's used in some codes.
I, I think still, in my viewpoint is, why are we messing with the regulations on the dwelling unit? If it's going to be part of or another accessory to the dwelling unit, I think we should still be within the guidelines of the dwelling unit. And my opinion is, I don't see why we need to now say, well, go build it five feet from your rear lot.
Well, I guess I would say is we have them. We have them in this valley. I, probably on a monthly basis, I get people calling and wanting to know if they can build a unit above their garage or if they build a garage.
Okay, but above their garage, that's what I'm saying. I don't care, they would still meet the code, right? It's still within the setbacks and still within the building.
No, I don't mean above their, their garage and further house.
Oh, a detached garage.
I mean, like, if they can build a garage in their backyard and then put a little apartment above it.
Well, see, and in my opinion would be no, you know, you can build your garage.
Well, that's why I tell them now.
Yeah, you could build your garage back there, but not an accessory dwelling unit.
And so I think that kind of, that's how this thing kind of ripples is then that if the practice right now is that accessory buildings, regardless of the size, can be built within five feet of the rear, the way we had it written previously was an error, and so now, you know, we're talking about, do we want to change the current practice or continue the current practice? And if we're going to add accessory dwelling units, does that, what changes with it? So all this discussion is very helpful because that goes right to the, to the heart of the matter. It's a little bit easier when we're talking about an existing space. If you already have a shop, if you already have a garage, then it's a matter of converting it. It's there, and as long as you don't increase the degree of non-conformity, okay, but it's the building the new ones that we're talking about. And everything you're saying is right on point, we just need to decide where we want to land.
Well, and the same thing, talking to Ken's situation, he's got an unconforming garage, and I don't know what the setbacks are, but in my opinion would be, if he wanted to convert it now to a habitable space, if it doesn't meet the habitable space requirements, then he can't do it. It's still a garage.
Well, I would, I mean, if we allowed conversion, I would say you still would be limited to whatever, if we had a parameter on how big the, the ADU could be, there would be some restrictions there.
Well, I'm just talking about, you know, the issue of setbacks and so forth. I mean, I'm just thinking, if we have setbacks on habitable space, I would like to apply them to ADUs also.
One other thing to keep in mind is that tomorrow, Walla Walla is adopting their zoning code, and they are, they're, they, their council's fully on board, they've been through a number of workshops, and they will be allowing accessory dwelling units in the reduced setbacks above garages. I don't know exactly what their parameters are and if they have some size restrictions, we should find that out, but...
John's also kind of maybe another thing, just to further muddy the waters, if you had an alley, then I could see, you know, that that might have a bearing on where you put the, a garage, things like that, because you have another way of access. But if you don't, and then you push the building to the back, you could argue that you're allowing a greater separation from the primary unit but making it potentially, you know, closer to the neighbor on the backside, so one could argue that that's not fair either.
But wouldn't the fire code come in there? I mean, you'd have to have room to get to buildings.
Yeah, well, you, you, I mean, a 100-foot lot is, I mean, they're, they're going to respond to this, on the front, and they can fight that distance. It's when you get beyond 150 feet, it's when they start to ask for access other than on foot, but...
One thing I don't know is how many of the existing lots in town really are configured this way, because this only applies to new lots, and you've got the lots that you have. My sense is, is that the lots that would be most suitable for accessory dwelling units would be the lots, the existing lots that are larger, that already have the shop or something, where you have the ability to convert something. Maybe there, I don't know, maybe there's the market now where you'd see people building a new building, but it seems like it would be much more likely to be someone would say, why don't we convert or put a second floor on that.
I would say a good portion of the older homes in this town are sitting on 7,000 to 8,000 square foot lots. So it's not uncommon to see, now, there are a few under 5,000 even, you know, so, and that's not uncommon either, but yeah, it's actually not uncommon to see really deep lots in this town.
I think you're going to see most of this happen on, in your older neighborhoods, neighborhoods often, I mean, in new subdivisions, the homes are so deep because the garages are on the front, there's, there's usually not a lot of lot coverage left, for one thing. They're pretty much maxing it out with the house. So, I mean, but then, you know, up in like in your neighborhood, Randall, those are pretty big lots up there, and so there, there could be the potential for somebody to, to get one, at least, probably not a garage and unit above it, but at least a, an accessory dwelling.
But that's, that's what, you know, to me, accessory in that definition, and that's what I'm kind of wrestling with is, and, and I've seen it even in town, right? Somebody converts the basement. I mean, I can, I could convert the basement in my house pretty easily to, you know, build a kitchen and whatever, and, and an outside entrance, and I could have an apartment. But that's even within the same structure, you know, I don't need to go build something. And, or I could convert an attic, you know, I've, there's some house in town that I'm visualizing right now that has, obviously they converted the attic, it kind of ugly stair going up has the access. But, you know, if it's accessory, it should, to me, it's accessory. Once you start saying, okay, well, we'll let you... Once you start saying, okay, well, we'll let you go build something back there, or convert something that's a garage, that's in the back, in an area, I start having issues because then I think that's where you start impacting your neighbors in your neighborhood. Uh, you know, if you have a bigger lot and you want to build another building, that could be an accessory dwelling unit and meet some of the same requirements, then your neighbor shouldn't have any concern, you know? If you're meeting your setbacks and you're meeting your lot coverage, then it shouldn't be an issue. You know, if you have a ten thousand square foot lot and you have room then to do something, well, okay, that's a different story.
Greg, do you remember what our, our policy or goal in the comp plan said about accessory dwelling units? Was it to allow them or, it goes, was it specific enough that it mentioned allowing accessory dwelling units in backyards?
It wasn't that specific, but it said accessory dwelling units, but it didn't say-
Where, how?
Yeah. One thing I'm going to suggest, because the purpose was to introduce this and get it thinking about, I want to talk about some of the others because these same issues apply, so you can have a chance to think about all of them. So, we've got setback to think about. We've got building height to think about and lot coverage. And those three things kind of have some interplay. But I want to talk about a couple of the other housing types because these same issues are going to come up. So, is that okay if we-
Yeah.
So, you've got a real good frame of reference. They're going to think this through just as you are, and we'll continue the discussion. But I'm going to talk about a, a couple more of the housing types. So, if you go to the other housing standards, and I'll start by explaining what they are. So, yeah, let's go to that one right there, the housing standards. So, there are some more special provisions. Manufactured housing, we can step over pretty quickly and explain what it is. There used to be a time when, when a, a single-family residence was a house that was, materials were wrought on and you built it from the ground up. And then over time, we got into the notion of, gee, you don't have to do it that way. You can build a house off-site and bring it on. And then that got into some question of what standards apply, dah, 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 dah. And at one point, the federal government said, okay, we're going to resolve this once and for all. And you can build houses off-site. You can manufacture a house and you can bring it onto the site, but there's certain standards that you have to meet, and it has to be certified. And if it does, then you have to permit that manufactured house any place you would permit a traditional stick-built house. So, there's a few little minor things about how it gets attached to the ground. It's in the regulations. You can look at it. We can talk more about it. I want to talk about the other ones. Cottage housing. What is cottage housing? Cottage housing is the notion that you can have a number of smaller, not two thousand one hundred square foot, but smaller dwelling units on a lot. And you can cluster them typically around a courtyard or an open space area. And we saw examples when we were on the tour in Walla Walla of some old cottage housing. But that is something that has been rediscovered, and you have now new cottage housing developments. And they, they say they tend to be smaller. You tend to have a, what's called a personal spacer area that might be your own patio or something. But then you have a shared and common space. It might be a green space. It might be gardens or something like that. But it is clustered around. So, as cottage housing, they tend to be smaller units, and you have shared spaces opposed to everybody having their own space. So, we have some regulations to talk about cottage housing. And one of the things, when you read through that, we want to talk about is, should cottage housing be restricted to multifamily zones because it's a type of multifamily development? Instead of being an apartment building, it's a cluster of families in smaller houses around an open space? Or should they also be permitted in single-family residential areas? And if so, then we did the discussion of setbacks, separation between buildings and building height. So, all those same issues apply, but it's now in a different context. It's around clustering the number of buildings together on the same lot. That's cottage housing. Cohousing is similar, but slightly different. You also get smaller units, but even in this case, even smaller units. They're clustered, but they are supported by some larger shared buildings on the site. Places where you may share communal dining or shared laundry facilities.
Or kitchen.
And things of that nature. So, that too is a kind of an old type of housing that's been rediscovered. There is now a cohousing development Spokane, just down the street from us. And they have not only a shared dining hall and kitchen area, but it also has a shared daycare place and a playground and some things. So, it's more of a intentional community. So, it's a kind of a cottage plus-type development, and that's cohousing. You have the same issues. When they're clustered together, how much smaller are they? Are there restrictions on the size of the shared or common buildings? What about the height? What about the setbacks? Same kind of issues.
So, on this particular one, or if they have a common kitchen, that means that the, the units themselves wouldn't have their own kitchen?
They may have a smaller one that is more like, you know, hot plate kind of things where you could do some light meals and things like that, but you're not going to have a big full kitchen. That's one of the ways that the unit gets smaller.
Interesting.
And that might have some appeal for folks that, you know, like either, you know, the company or, you know, you know, just the affordability of the unit being smaller. Town homes or zero-watt line developments is another type. In this case, where you then can have dwelling units that are attached. Two dwelling units that are attached are called a duplex. Or three, in some cases, are called a triplex or a quadplex or whatever. The point is, is that you're allowing buildings to be connected, and you still have your own ownership, but you can build right up to the side property line. So, you have zero, you have no side yard setback. The buildings are right up against each other, and you can string a number of buildings together. You still have potentially your own lots, but there's just no space in between the buildings. Now, there's some things you have to work out about access easements and some things like that. But in the more urban areas, if you think of places like, you know, New York or Boston or Philadelphia or something like that, you could be thinking about town homes or row houses or things like that. Those might be examples. But it is another way, and it's another way that provides affordability because you're not paying for the lot or you're not paying as much for the lot. And so, it's a different type of multifamily in this sense. And that goes back then to the notion of increasing the number of choices and types and affordabilities. But there are some standards for that. And then finally, you get into mixed use with commercial and residential, where you can typically have commercial on the ground floor and residential above. Or, in some cases, it might make sense if you allow commercial on the front to allow residential in the back in separate buildings. But that gives you some efficiency in the use because commercial uses tend to be, want to be in places where they're visible from the road. And so, by allowing a mixed-use development, if you have the properties that are accessible from the road is where the commercial uses are, then you may have some, you know, multifamily buildings behind that that could be apartments or condos or things. Um, but that is another way. So, there are regulations that govern each one of those. That's separate from accessory dwelling units because these are primary dwelling units, but they have exactly the same issues. How big? How much lot coverage? How high? How much separation? Same issues. So, as you go through here, you'll see exactly the same thing. It's like in cottage housing, for instance. It says the first floor should now exceed one thousand square feet. So, that, you know, you know, we were talking before about accessory dwelling units. Maybe accessory should be larger. So, you know, kind of where's the line between accessory and something like a cottage? Is it six hundred? Is it eight hundred? Is it a thousand? Um, um, lot coverage, just like we did with accessory dwelling units, increasing the lot coverage as a way of encouraging type of development. On some of these alternatives, we increased the lot coverage as an incentive to be able to provide that type of housing. Um, parking requirements. And oftentimes, when you see things like cottages, you see a lower parking requirement. But then sometimes there's also a recognition that there needs to be some permissions for guest parking, and maybe that's shared, that everybody doesn't have a guest at the same time. But that there's some way of being able to, you know, reduce the parking requirement. Reduce your park credit, that reduces the land or increases the number of units. That makes them more affordable. Those are all the kinds of trade-offs. So, you're going to see exactly the same kind of issues in every single one of these types of housing. They just are packaged a little bit differently. So, as you read these, or with the benefit of the discussion we had in accessory dwelling is, if you'd ask yourself the same things and just, you know, mark them up and say, let's talk more about this, they're exactly the same issues, just repeated time and time again. Questions about any of these housing types?
We missed one. Tiny.
Oh, tiny. Thank you. Yeah, let's talk about that. What is a tiny house?
That's right. I was going to say that.
They are also referred to as park models, but they are houses that were, or dwelling units that were originally built with the notion that they would be highly mobile, that you could like, for vacation purposes or recreation purposes, take them out to your lot and use it to, you know, stay in the summer and, you know, play and everything. And at the end of the year, maybe you bring it back home or put it in storage or something like that. They are tiny houses. They're very small, and they fit on a chassis, so they're mobile. They're a variation on what we used to call mobile homes. And so, the question then is, can a tiny house, which by its definition isn't, doesn't, you know, isn't a home that meets all of the requirements of a building code, at what point are we going to allow those to be used as either homes or accessory dwelling units or not at all? As I said, some communities now are having policy discussions about using a cluster of tiny homes as, as a solution for the homeless because it's easier and less costly to build a number of very, very minimal units, you know, like a couple hundred square feet, and have that be housing, especially if some of the things, supports that go with it are external to it. So, that's one discussion. Does it make a difference if you take it off the chassis and connect it to a foundation? So, now it's not as, as mobile and it's attached to a foundation. Does that make a difference? Now, the building codes are trying to scramble to catch up with the tiny housing movement right now. And so, there's some attachments or appendices that are being developed, appendix Q and appendix V, that, so there may ultimately be some standards from the building code that says, okay, you can have these tiny houses that have some things that don't meet normal codes like stairs up to the, you know, a ladder up to the loft instead of stairs and some other, and little tiny kitchens. We'll, we'll say that they're okay, but there's still some basic life safety things that you need to make. So, it's an, an evolving area, but how does that fit into the equation? Can you bring a tiny home, pull it into your backyard, park it, and say, that's my accessory dwelling unit? And can you park it five feet from the property line? Is that okay? Or is it, if you park it twenty feet from the park, from the property line, does that make it better? Or if you attach it to a foundation, does that make it better? So, that's where tiny houses come into play is, it's a variation on the old kind of, you know, single-wide mobile home. It's a variation on an RV and a camper. It's something more than a tent. How does it fit into the equation? And whatever the answer is, then there would be some specific regulations or standards that govern that. And we have the beginning of some in here where, what do we say? We say they can be approved for a residential dwelling unit only if the wheels have been removed and it's been attached to a foundation, it's been connected to utilities. It applies, if there are any provisions in the International Building Code that are adopted for tiny homes, you have to meet whatever those might be. And there is a process. You just can't build something small and pronounce it a tiny home. There has to be, at least laboring industries has to, in the case of ones that are manufactured and sold, they have to go off and inspect where they're being built, inspect the building plans, and you can get a, a medallion or a certification that you're getting a certified tiny home. And so, as written, we're saying that you have to have, it has to be a certified one. Now, that doesn't deal with the question of, there's kind of a movement of do-it-yourselfers that want to build their own little tiny homes and have them really be cool. That doesn't deal with that, so it gets-
This harks back because in title business, we ran up against mobile homes being put on property for living purposes. And there's a process that you go through called mobile home title elimination. So, you actually apply to have the title eliminated through the, uh, department licensing.
The mobile, mobile home is actually a vehicle. It's not a house.
It's, it's a vehicle, so you're, you're eliminating the title. But in that process, to put it on property, it has to have foundation, be hooked up, and meet all those considerations. And then, once the title eliminated, it's considered an improvement to the property.
So, well, I, Mike, go ahead and finish your argument.
So, the, the indication is, you know, you're talking about tiny homes. It sounds like they're trying to meet the same kinds of criteria.
It does, doesn't it? And it makes me wonder what quality of construction are they? Are we talking manufacturing home quality construction? Are we talking a RV quality construction? Because I'll tell you, I've been around RVs my whole life in the automotive industry, and their quality of construction is horrible. You know, for a full-time living in vehicle, you just can't do that. So, if they're built to manufacturing standards, I think a tiny home will, will qualify.
And a lot of communities are struggling with it right now. Counties have a challenge with it because folks are buying them and then, you know, going out into the unincorporated area of the county somewhere, parking it, not hooking it up to utilities and stuff and converting it into a full-time residence. That becomes a problem. Um, in Seattle, it's an issue because they allow them to be used in homeless shelters or homeless developments. In Seattle, it's an issue because they allow them to be used in homeless shelters or homeless developments. But then some of the promised support services that were supposed to go with it didn't materialize. And so then the neighbors are feeling that, you know, they promised this and delivered this. So there's a whole bunch of stuff going on in tiny homes. But the notion is, is that there can be, it may be somewhat non-traditional, but for the right person in the right setting, it might be a good thing. Just like in apartments, we now have micro apartments. Because there's, some of the younger kids and stuff, they don't need a lot of space.
There, there's some confusion of terminology as well. So there's, there's the tiny homes that some of the affordable housing community movement they're using for temporary shelters. But they're not, they're not the tiny homes that you're seeing on, on the home network or whatever, where they're on a chassis. So they're tiny units that maybe don't have a full kitchen in them, maybe they have a bathroom or a shower, maybe they don't. Some of these shelters don't even have those. They're basically just space for a bedroom and, you know, a little bit of living space. And then the appendix Q in the building code, they're attempting to address if you want to build a stick-built tiny home and have things like lofts that don't meet living space standards and under the normal building code for sleeping spaces utilizing skylights as emergency exits instead of, you know, things like that. So there's a lot of confusion going on with the term tiny home. And, you know, under LNI's definition of what a tiny home is in terms of on a chassis, it's a park model. You get a permit through them, you, you get your plans approved through them. They come, you know, once a year, whatever their requirements are, and inspect your factory and make sure that you're building them to whatever your approved plans were. They may be poorly built, you know, a park model RV is, or not RV, but a park model manufactured home is not the same as a manufactured home lets two parts put together. Their, their, the R values are different. A manufactured home meets the Washington State Energy Code supposedly. And a park model doesn't have to meet those energy codes. Neither does the, neither does the, the tiny home that's being permitted through LNI. It may be two by four constructions that are two by six or, yeah, you may be able to still heat it with a match because it's only 150 square feet, but it still doesn't meet the same standards.
We will have to make sure that on any of these, we have a definition of what it, what it means and what it isn't. And, 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 and so there'll be a lot of kind of, it, it, that, that's why regulations are getting bigger and bigger because you have to kind of spell and address all these things. But we wanted to provide that context so you could kind of reread the regulations, think about these, and think about, well, in this case, it may be this, but in this case, maybe we can make an exception or deal with this different, where the lines are. So reread them and we'll come back in January and talk about all of these. And then as we go along, then we're going to, you know, further complicate things because then we'll add in vacation rentals, bed and breakfasts, RV parks, mobile home parks, there'll be a whole number of things that we keep adding to this list. But if we do have one last item, this is going to take about five minutes. So I want to kind of, maybe unless there's last questions or comments, stop here and then say Merry Christmas, here's your reading for.
Well, yeah, I, I feel like we've covered a lot of information here and haven't had a lot of time for input and feedback. And so I would like to give my fellow commissioners some homework for our next meeting in January. And I've scribbled down some things. And John, Greg, jump in if I leave something out because I'm sure I will. But one of the things that I wanted to come back to, and we won't have time today, is the planter strip issue. And so Eileen and Ken, what we talked about last time was we have the requirement for planter strips on arterials and collectors, but not on local streets. And we had some discussion on whether we wanted to implement those planter strips on local streets. We didn't have a unanimous, but we had a general consensus that it was no, but we had two people missing. So I want to get your input on that for next meeting. Also, for everybody, whether we're comfortable with doing the the reduction of five foot on the front setback if we allow, if the development chooses to do planter strips. So, planter strips? On local streets? And then do we allow that five foot setback reduction?
With that reduction, does it reduce the lot size also then from 6,000 to something less?
No.
No.
No, just reduce the set.
It is absorbed in the 20 foot?
It would be five foot less because we have a five foot planter strip.
Then having a 20 foot front grass yard early and a 15 foot front grass yard.
Yeah, because that right away line moves five foot, yeah. So then from today's discussion, the lot coverage is proposed at 35%, 45% if there's an accessory dwelling unit included. Are we comfortable with that? And then I have four items on the accessory dwelling units themselves. So I kind of read from Randall that he is not excited about a separate structure. So I would like to get, you know, a straw poll from each of our members, whether we're interested in accessory dwelling units or not. Are we wanting to do a set square footage max size? Or have that lot dependent? In other words, if the lot is bigger, do we allow bigger accessory? Yeah, I have a hard time with that. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Do we allow bigger ADUs with bigger lots? The max height, is that a fixed height or does it match the primary structure? If it's a two-story structure, are we as concerned about the ADU being taller? Parking space, there's a discount proposed for proximity to transit. Do we want to allow that deduction or not? Setbacks, do we want to maintain the setbacks per standard development code? Or do we have a separate setback allowance for ADUs? So those are the things I'd like to get feedback from everybody on. And I can leave this scribble list with, with you, John, if you want.
That'd be helpful.
But it'd be helpful to document this and send it out.
Make sure that we have, yeah, we can send.
And then Greg and John, if you have other clarifications you'd like to add, please do. But I'd like to have us prepared in advance of our next meeting so we can start making some decisions and narrow our scope for progress.
And we'll, we'll give you a couple of different scenarios of the standard lot size so you can see the different implications of those too. We'll clean that up.
Now, these planter strips, is this on the main street? Or on all?
Residential streets.
This would be a new residential street, so a new subdivision.
And we've already established it will be required on all arterials and collectors. So the question is, do we also want to do it on local streets, subdivision streets?
Great, super, thank you.
Okay. You had one more item?
One more item, but I wanted to give you a, a, an update. It may, I don't know if it's going to be in the news or not, but at least give you an, an update. This goes back to the comprehensive plan and the two applications that the city submitted to the county. What we now refer to as application one was going to take Martin Airfield and the 218 acres around it and take it out of the city's urban growth area and change the designation from industrial and create a special zoning district for Martin Airfield, just like there's a special zoning district for the Walla Walla Airport. Different provisions, but conceptually the same. And with uses that would be compatible for the airfield. And also, there was a provision at the request of the current owner of the airfield to take the 18 acres that is up on the bluff, that is above the airfield, that, that's accessed through the homestead development and have that remain in the UGA, but change from industrial to residential. That was application one. And application two then was to add three areas to the city's urban growth area in the southeast corner, Area 2A, which fronts on State Route 125 right across from the high school and Walmart, which would be targeted for commercial development. Area 2B, which is on Pepper Bridge Road and would focus on the undeveloped land between Soaring Hawk and Pepper Bridge Road, approximately 40 acres. And a small strip of land just below the McKernan Christiansen property on the other side of the highway. So that was application two, this was application one. We had gone through a public process for over a year with the county in addition to the process through the city. And on December 5th was the final day to submit comments to the county planning commission. And they had a public hearing that night on December 5th. Right prior to the deadline for the comments, a flurry of comments came in precipitated by a potential new buyer of the airfield. And they were objecting to the removal of this area from the, the urban growth area and was requesting that the current zoning of industrial stay in place. Now, that was a little bit confusing because under the current zoning, an airfield is not a permitted use of the industrial zone. But their letters talked about their commitment to expanding and upgrading and improving the airfield. And it was a little bit confusing because the proposed zoning would have been special zoning just for the airfield. So there was some disconnect somewhere, but it was a, an expression. So the, the prospective buyer spoke to, to, in opposition to this. The current owner who had requested this, who responded to that and said, no, I'm not in favor of that. And the prospective developer of this area said, no, we're not in favor of that. And so the plant, the county planning commission, based on all that testimony they received, recommended to the county commissioners that this area, that no changes be made to this, that it stay in the city's urban growth area and the industrial zoning on the entire thing stay in place. That was the county planning commission's recommendation. They then recommended that this additions be approved. So from that standpoint, from the city's standpoint, the important thing was this. This was confusing, but if they want to leave it in the urban growth area, okay.
One other thing, the, the potential buyer, they also appealed the SEPA decision for that application number one. So that kind of might be the water as well.
So what's the SEPA decision?
Yeah, the, the determination that, that, that this would, would, would not have a significant impact on the environment. The effect of that meant that there would have to be a, a hearing and a whole appeal process on the environmental review before the county could make a decision on the application. So adding time and expense and, and uncertainty.
That's currently county property, right? That's not part of the city?
It's, it's in the city's urban growth area, but it is under the county's jurisdiction.
But it's not in our city, but it's.
Right. Yep.
So it doesn't sound to me like they're asking for there to be any change and they can't, you know, are they coming to the city and saying, we want to be part of the city?
No.
Well, not here.
No.
Then it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, so there, there was a number of things that were confusing about it. Today was the hearing before the county commissioners. And before that flurry of activity and before the appeal was filed, today was the day that the county at long last was going to make their decisions on these comprehensive plan amendments. That did not happen today. But there was a public hearing today. The city, in consultation with the city attorney, going back to this, this is in the county's planning jurisdiction. We thought that the, that we still think that this is an area that is not suitable for industrial development. And that having zoning intended to protect the airport would be desirable. And at the request of the owner, that we had requested that this be residential. And when the owner said, I don't want it to be residential and I don't want special zoning to protect my airport. I want things just left the way they are. And the current owner said, I want it to be left the way we are. We had a discussion with the, the mayor and the city attorney. And the city today formally withdrew this application and said to the county commissioners, you can leave it just the way it is. You can leave it in the city's urban growth area and you can leave it industrial. We don't think it's suitable for industrial, but that's your problem because it's in the county. And the airfield is not a permitted use in here zoning district. That's your problem. You and the new owner are going to have to deal with that. That's not the city's issue. It's not our fight. And so the city withdrew its application. In doing so, the city reiterated its interest and its commitment to this. And, and acknowledged that the planning commission had recommended this. And, and, and so the city spoke in favor of this today. And so the county commissioners are still considering adding this to the urban growth area without removing this. Conversations with the, among the attorneys afterwards, the attorneys involved over here said it's their intent to withdraw the SEPA appeal and withdraw their appeals and their protests based on the actions by the city. So there may be, it may be quiet on the western front for now. The city has a proposal that remains to add this to the urban growth area. There are however now a number of property owners in this area. Some of the ones along here and some of the ones in here who have said we don't want to be a part of the city's urban growth area. Or they have confused annexation with urban growth area designation. So we don't want to be annexed into the city. Or they have said, we don't want city water today. We don't want city water tomorrow. We don't ever want city water. So don't put us in the urban growth area, even though we understand that wells are contaminated in the area. So now there's kind of a group of folks here that are kind of agitated, but there are also property owners here that said, we want to be in the urban growth area. We want city water. We want our property to be, to be, to be able to be developed commercially or residentially. So there's going to be an ongoing discussion there. But the county commissioners have a recommendation to approve from the county planning commission. And that was reinforced today by the testimony from the, from the city. So that's where it stands right now. The hearing was not closed today, but was continued to February. So there's not going to be a decision at least until February on all of this.
Did I say February? I thought February.
Yeah. So who knows, but when it's all said and done, we could end up with this being in the urban growth area and this being in the urban growth area. Although as we discussed before, one could certainly argue that there is not 234 acres of, of land that is suitable for industrial development in this picture.
So there's no industrial land available?
That's what, that's what the city said. But the prospective new owner certainly views it differently. But we have no idea what he has in mind. But the only thing we can figure is it appears to involve city water because if it was out of the urban growth area. because if it was out of the urban growth area, they would, that would be one thing that, that, you know, that they would lose out on. So whatever the plans are, it must involve accessing the city water.
So just a rumor of what I heard that those people were kind of thinking about, which I don't see how this helps them, except for maybe the water. Is that they want to improve the airport and even build some additional hangars or whatever. But somewhere in there, in that property, I don't know where, have built homes for people that can have an airplane and kind of drive it to their home sort of thing, you know? But if it's supposed to be commercial industrial, yeah.
Residences aren't a permitted use in the industrial zone. Is if that's what they wanted to do, they were being handed it with the zoning that the city and county were proposing. And they didn't want to do that. Another rumor is, is, well, they want to expand the airport and want to be, allow private jets to allow land there. Well, if they were going to do that under the proposal, they would have been able to do it under what they, what they said that they wanted, they can't. So that doesn't make sense. Nothing makes sense in this picture, so it's kind of a house in Wonderland. It doesn't make any sense at all, but if, if that's what you want.
It makes sense as.
They argued against it.
Argued against it.
There was 18 acres that they were going to be able to build on, and they said, no, we're opposed to that.
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know if they think they're going to change the land use of that lower part into urban residential.
History repeats itself.
So it was all a mystery to us. We don't know. But as it stands, stands right now, the, the, the area, it will stay in the urban growth area, it'll stay as industrial zoning. The focus becomes these three areas, 2A, 2B, and 2C. This property owner reaffirmed that they want this to stay in and that would be prime property for commercial development. And the other property owners said, we don't want it to be commercial property to May, tomorrow, or the next day, we bought this even and have lived here and liked the rural feeling of living on a highway across the high school and all that, and want to continue to enjoy that and just leave us alone. Don't get it. There's also arguments between property owners whether this was committed to stay in open space forever or not. But those aren't arguments that the city gets involved in. The city's point was, there's going to be a new well here, there's going to be a water main here. An urban growth area is defined as an